Everyone, I will call the Monday, May 20th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order and as she has just recently returned to our country, I will ask Kathy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you didn't have any second thoughts about coming back or anything like that?
Well, I-
Still. Fair enough, fair enough. Update from the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, where is Scott? Scott, drink. It's all yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. If I may, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our newest city council representative, Betty Clark, who's back here.
Hi, Betty, how are you?
Well, starting in March, and she's been a great addition. We appreciate all your help and making sure she's appointed. To mind Frank Wilson is our other city council appointee on our board as well. We just launched a huge research project. Research is pretty much the foundation of everything we do. We can tell you everything you want to know about the visitor in the city of Dublin through the city of Dublin, but we really haven't dove into residents in the past couple of years. So we jumped into something called a place DNA research project, which interviewed residents, a lot of people within the city of Dublin, our people around the city of Dublin as well. We wanted to share a couple of those. There's only about 250 slides or so, so you're okay if I go through those, right?
Sure, go ahead. Depends how quickly you do.
I've got three minutes, I'm going to summarize it pretty quickly. So you can see the screen here, in our DNA, every community has a DNA, and these are kind of the seven different areas of history, people, culture, geography, climate, environment, and economy. So everyone really has this, what we call DNA. The project that we did focused on three different audiences. The first one, the DNA, the top two was the workshops and survey. Those were Dublin residents only, and a lot of you, thank you for joining us in some of those workshops and surveys as well. And that's a lot of the research I'm going to share with you, a couple of slides just tonight, to give you an idea of what our residents think of our community. The channel observation, those are various things, like the bureau, the city, restaurants, hotels and such, what they're saying about Dublin, the businesses that are within the city of Dublin. And then the sentiment analysis, our people externally outside the city of Dublin, what they're actually thinking about. So what makes Dublin Dublin? So this is a kind of a busy slide, I'll read you a couple of things. This is from Dublin residents' perspective. The top five things that they graded, it's the top things in the city of Dublin, roads, bikeways, infrastructure, our festivals and events, our parks, our city amenities, and the look of our city were the five top things our city residents graded as top assets in our community. Things that kind of skewed toward the lower end, museums, climate, artists and such, so that those didn't skew as quite as high as the other ones. A report card, if you kind of looked at all the residents, here's how they kind of ranked our city across the board. They have people that did this, the Destination Think International, they're an international research firm, they said it's the first time they've ever had a report card with three A pluses. So it's tremendously an asset to all of your efforts that you're doing here. Amenities, crime, that's a good thing, chief, A plus meaning no crime, that's a positive thing. Education, obviously, weather, who's going to argue with that, right? High weather, D plus, cost of living, housing and employment as well. So that's kind of the report card that our city residents kind of gave us as a community. This is a fun and interesting one. So we asked them, you know, grade us in three different levels. Society, and society's things like our culture, our values, our peoples, infrastructures, what you would think would be like roads, and then environment is the weather and that kind of thing. So give you kind of a point of reference, for example, in Paris, this agency did the same thing in Paris. Infrastructure was by far and away the number one thing in Paris, the Eiffel Tower and all the great infrastructure things they have there. Hawaii was another client, their environment was by far the best thing that their residents saw. We, as residents in the community, see our greatest asset is our people, our values, our culture, and it's really very closely to infrastructure as well, which is tremendously positive and I think a great opportunity for us as an organization to sell and market the city of Dublin as well with that. This quickly, I won't go through all these, but this is kind of, we gave them two words, tell us which we are. Are we safe, unsafe? Obviously, 99% of our residents said we're safe. 97% of our residents are happy versus unhappy, so all positive. And you kind of go down here quickly and see some of the other things that were highlighted. Suburbs, city, and so forth and so on down there. This is kind of, out of all the research, the agency kind of came up with a paragraph or so, kind of capturing residents and what they think. Most people in Dublin value getting along with others, they're generally considerate, kind, generous, trusting and trustworthy, helping and willing to compromise their interests with others. Residents of Dublin have an optimistic view of human nature. Nothing that we're surprised at, I'm sure. This is a cool one, too, how proud are we as residents? And again, don't take too much, very proud and proud, I mean, you know, one person's extremely proud, it's the next person's proud, but look at not proud at all. 1% of our entire residency said they're not proud. So again, extremely positive results from our residents. So moving on to what other people outside of Dublin are thinking about, or saying about Dublin, this is social media kind of conversation in the last, this year so far, in the last three or four months. And that is what, a different amount of conversations through Facebook and social media and such. You can kind of see, we took our competitive set, that's Mason, Carmel, Naperville, and Akron. Akron is skewed, people are still talking about LeBron James for some reason in Akron, so that still kind of skews the data there, but it shows you how we are very much in our competitive set, very up there with the conversation socially. If you look at sentiment comparison, again, the blue, dark blue is the people that promote Dublin online. We are far and above, higher percentage than any of our competitors. The passive voice is good, but if you look at detractors, we're the lowest of all those as well. And again, detractors, people are saying negative things about their particular city online, promoters are saying positive. If you look at the sentiment score on the right, we're far outweighing our competitor, competitive set with those as well. This is one that I thought was interesting that I threw up here. Again, we're the dark black line, and a competitive city averages the red. Again, you know, we're out, in terms of our attractions and landmarks, I know Dan's going to be up here in a minute, but look how we are in sporting events and golf events, how well we do against the competitive set. A thing that kind of jumped out at us, too, and again, this is a good example of what we do with research sometimes that maybe aren't really positive or negative, but if you go all the way down to the bottom, I would argue with anyone, we have as good paths in cycling inventory and assets as anyone in the country. So that's an opportunity for us to push that out and make sure people across the country realize what kind of asset that is here in our community with that. So there were hundreds and hundreds of comments, I bowled down four or five that I grabbed, but I thought you guys might be interested in my residents saying, and these are directly from your residents. Living Dublin makes me feel blessed and privileged, almost anything I need is within a five-mile radius. Dublin is an absolute perfect community to live in, it is planned, a city, but also feels very, so natural, businesses and schools are integrated into the neighborhoods, neighborhoods are connected by trails, even our shops perimeter feel beautifully designed. There are no eyesore anywhere in Dublin. Clean, very clean, very safe, so beautiful, is the best place I've ever lived. This is one I kind of like. We're a bit in a bubble, but it's a nice bubble. So, you know, overall, I think it's great data that we're using, you know, what do we do with this information? I think it kind of serves as a foundation for us to build our campaigns. As you can kind of see with a lot of the research we've got, I can kind of show you that the campaigns, there's going to be kind of an element of sharing some of our residents' enthusiasm for our community in those campaigns, so be on the lookout for that as well. So again, there's a huge amount of information, I'm happy to share the whole detail with you if you'd like, but that's kind of three minutes and kind of a nutshell of that. A couple of quick things, this weekend, you may have noticed a bunch of archers over at Dari Fields. We hosted the 219 National Outdoor Collegiate Championships. We had over 600 archers, 60 universities from across the United States. Texas A&amp;M actually won the championship out there as well. This is the fifth archery event we've had in the last two years. And actually, we're hosting the sixth in August, the national championship is coming back again. And again, thanks to all of you for your bed tax grant, for allowing us to use Dari Fields, thanks to Dana and his staff, and Lori and Matt, and especially the Parks and Recs folks, they do a tremendous job out there. There's no way we could bring an event like that if it wasn't for all of you helping. And again, these events, and the Memorial Tournament's a huge example, you've heard me on the soapbox before, it's more than just the bed tax. I mean, people are coming in, they're spending tens of thousands of dollars in our community, creating jobs, income tax, raising the profile of our community. So it's a win-win across the board as well. We know that, I think last week, John and I were just talking briefly about the Cleveland Fox feature that was on Dublin, 45 Minutes, and it's something that's a little bit confusing, but we call that earned media. So there's two kinds of media, one where you buy advertising, ads, print ads, whatever it might be, and then the other end is earned media, which is free advertising, which we work, a lot of sweat equity going in there and filling that, raise the profile of the city. That is a great example in Cleveland, it did not cost us one dime to get free. You can imagine what a 45-minute advertisement in a Cleveland Fox would have cost us, but that's something we worked to get that secured. And we've been able to the last year or so, all over the country, raising the profile, been USA Today, Wall Street Journal, other publications across the country. And to date, we have over 19 million impressions that we generated through that effort. So we'll continue to work to raise the profile of the city with that. And then finally, I'd like to just kind of mention downtown Dublin, the Alliance continues to plug along, doing very well, we're meeting monthly, working with city staff, Allison and Kyle, and Sue, and Bridge Park, and HDBA and the Historical Society. Everyone is getting along remarkably well, collaborating. You would ask me three years ago, I thought this would have been a short-lived kind of thing, where we were there compared to where we are now. So it's working very well, everyone's working good together, and there's things we're working to actually look in the future of extending events, creating events together, working with staff on the Bridge event, all kinds of things down the road.
Thank you, Scott, we greatly appreciate all that you do for this community, you guys just do a fantastic job. Any comments from council?
You know, Scott, it's called earned advertising, it used to be called guerrilla advertising at Harvard.
There you go.
That's where the term, it's not used anymore, right?
I don't think so. But I get, it's guerrilla marketing, guerrilla, yeah, same kind of thing. You just have to get, you know, work hard at it.
Yeah, after watching that 45-minute expose on how wonderful Dublin is, I just want to point out, you know, because you've gone to some very interesting places, there's a 92-year-old lady at Vincenza's, she'd be a great interview. And you know, you always want to eat at an Italian restaurant where there was a little lady with a bun on her head, and she's in the back making all the pasta, and what a unique thing for our city. She's at Vincenza's, she starts up every morning there. And I thought, as I was watching us, that thing, as they took us around all the restaurants and bars, there's another really interesting resource.
Absolutely, well, that's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, she's really, really a neat lady, works every day. Amazing.
So Scott, just really quickly, how many room nights roughly does an event like this last archery event bring in?
Archery, I think we had close to 2,200 room nights, and that was, it was, people started coming in on Wednesday, so you had 600 archers, you had family. So an event like that, I mean, to kind of put it in apples-to-apples comparison, the grant, I think, was around $15,000 or $20,000. You guys, you got that money back almost double, just in bed tax grant, not to mention everything else. You know, obviously, our largest event, the Memorial Tournament, Dan's going to talk about that, and Nike Soccer are right up there, you know, they're probably $3,000, $4,000 room nights as well. So it fills the majority of our hotel with everything else we have going on, it fills the majority of our rooms that weekend, for sure. Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else from council? Jay?
Just real quick, I absolutely love the survey that you did with the consultants, because, one, I think it helps us understand what the true appreciation here is by our community of what makes this place special. And we work to do a lot of the bits and pieces of economic development and all that, but what's really appreciated here is this holistic sense of community, the trustworthiness, the sense of safety, the things that every city municipality hopes that they can offer their residents, and it's just so nice to be assured that that's how they feel about the place. And I don't think we've ever seen it officially stated the way it is. And it also, I think, gives us a little window of where maybe we need to pay attention, like on the variety of housing, we didn't get a very high score on that, and we've talked about that. So it gives us an opportunity to think about where we can improve on some of the things, but I just, I think the survey is fabulous.
And the cool thing about the survey, too, the validity of it, they didn't know where it was coming from. I mean, it wasn't coming from the Dublin CVB or the city of Dublin or the chain, but it was coming from this entity, so it was totally unbiased in terms of, people could say whatever they wanted.
They were a really great group. I've been in a lot of those, you know, kind of activities, and they ran it particularly well. They were a sharp-
Yeah.
-sharp group of folks.
Great, thanks a lot for coming in, Scott, greatly appreciated. And I would like to welcome Dan Salt, Executive Director of the Memorial Tournament. Our crown jewel of the Dublin community is right around the corner, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor.
How about your update?
Appreciate it. Thank you for having me, thank you, council. I haven't been here a while, so I thought I'd come in the eve of the Memorial, just give you a quick update, but I'll start with recognizing Scott's information couldn't be more helpful to us, really kind of verifying how Dublin is a perfect place to host a PGA Tour event. And as much as Muirfield's kind of led the way with Dublin in the beginning, Dublin is leading the way with Memorial Tournament into the future, and we very much appreciate the support that the entire tournament, or excuse me, the entire community gives. So first, I want to say thanks for all the support throughout the year. You know, we start our process early on the planning side, but we really are out in the community starting around March. And from a promotional standpoint, we start in March, we get into April, we had our Legends Luncheon, which many of you were at, and thank you very much for being there, we were able to raise 1.4 million for Nationwide Children's Hospital, and have a really good day, just kind of kicking off the season for the Memorial Tournament with Judy Rankin and Jack Nicholas. And then just this past Friday, we had our benefit concert, many of you were at that as well. Really nice night with Train as the artist, again, just a chance to be out in front of the community in a different way, not just four days of golf, but giving back and bringing people together and having fun doing it. Hopefully, you've seen our advertising, and locally, we feel good about our campaign, it's called Be a Fan, bringing people out into the tournament and coming to Dublin. But the one thing I do want to point out is that we're advertising outside of Dublin, outside of Columbus. We're doing a fair amount of marketing up in Akron Canyon, because they lost their PGA Tour event and the Bridgestone Invitational. So we did a little test to see if people still had that appetite to watch professional golf live and in person, and get a nice response out of that. We're also on Fox Sports Ohio across the entire state in a number of different ways, advertising, we're inside Reds games, inside Indians games, we were inside the Blue Jackets games, really promoting the memorial in a very different way to a different demographic, and promoting the fact that if you have the urge, come to Dublin and be a part of the event. And we're doing extremely well, so I'll lead into what's happening for into Tournament Week. All indicators are up, selling very well, both on the corporate side and on the individual. I think the economy has something to do with that, obviously, but I think we're maybe doing a little better job of advertising, being more direct in our advertising, hitting the demographic more efficiently than we have in the past. It doesn't hurt that we have the anticipation of Tiger coming. I'm not announcing Tiger being here, but I'm saying the anticipation of him coming, we should know sooner or later in the next couple of days, but just people are interested in golf, maybe more this year than they have been in the past because of what he did at the Masters, and the fact that, and what he did at the end of last season. So kind of a rising tide right now within the game of golf, and lucky enough, we get the majority of the top players to come here. People seem to appreciate them being in this marketplace, and so we benefit from that. Just a quick rundown of what we're going to be doing this weekend and the next, so we have the four miler on Thursday, just as a reminder, the streets of Muirfield will be a little crowded for about an hour and a half. Again, we'll have 1,800 to 1,900 people running, and another nice way for us to engage the community, raise some money for the hospital and kick off the Tournament Week. Our volunteer party is the next night, we'll have over 2,000 people coming from all over the place. These aren't just folks from Dublin who volunteer for the tournament, they come from all over the state, outside of the state, and we host a party for them on Friday night just to thank them, and extremely well-received each year and well-attended. And then we'll obviously get into Tournament Week and all the activities there. Want to recognize the partnership and the support that you give us on the Leaderboard Breakfast on Wednesday morning, really nice way, again, to engage the business community in a way that we started back in the President's Cup and that continues to grow each year, thanks to Sue's support and Dana's and many others. The Four Fest, we're partnering with Bridge Park and Crawford-Hoyne to try to continue to grow that, we're going from one day to three, as you know, and we have big plans for that to be a nice complement to Memorial Tournament Week. Again, as we grow and as we evolve as a golf tournament, we got to make sure that we're appealing to many different demographics, not just the core golf fan. One way to do that is to add on as many different things to do during a golf tournament as you possibly can. So going around our golf course, we have a lot of more interactive things than we've ever had before, bunker challenges, putting challenges, destinations for people to go to. But then partnering with Bridge Park and the Four Fest is something that allows us to extend the day, have an opportunity for friends and family to get together early in the day at the tournament and end up at Four Fest later in the day. Hopefully, what that does is translate into more benefit for Dublin, people staying in hotels, people going out into the restaurants and bars and spending their well-earned dollars in the community. So in general, we're in great shape, we want to thank you, look forward to partnering next week, and I want to, I'll end by saying this, when we focus on the memorial, really kind of narrowed it down to four different things that we're paying attention to. We want to make sure that we're the best community event we possibly can be, that we're attracting as diverse and as broad a demographic as possible to the tournament, make it available for everyone, so there's a day for the military, 18 and under get in free. We want to make sure that families are coming out and really enjoying the atmosphere, and again, growing outside of Dublin, making sure that it's available to as many people as possible, that they come into the community. We're focused on the economic impact, we got to keep on driving this machine to make sure that people are using the tournament to enjoy themselves, better their business, whatever makes it worthwhile for them, we want to make sure the memorial is a part of that. And the end result is an economic impact that will grow, not only in Dublin here, but across the region. Our broad promotion, we'll have over 400 media come cover this event from, how many different countries? 30 different countries. All broadcast will go to 200 countries and territories, reach over a billion people, and they're all out there telling the story about how great Muirfield Village Golf Club is, how great the Memorial Tournament is, and how cool Dublin, Ohio is. And so we work behind the scenes to make sure all those media understand where we are and the relationship that we have, and hopefully, that's translated out into the general marketplace. And then the final is philanthropic commitment. You heard me on the 1.4 on the Legends Luncheon, we hope to achieve beyond $2.7, $2.8 million and giving. All that money stays in central Ohio, some of it stays here in Dublin, but we absolutely make sure that it stays in central Ohio, and central Ohioans are benefiting from everything that we do. So if we pay attention to those four categories, those four initiatives, and we do them right, we're going to have a really successful tournament in a long future. So with that, thank you very much. We look forward to a great week together, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Dan. It's not possible to overstate how important this tournament is to this community. How long have you been there, Dan?
I've been here 27 years.
27 years.
19 as the director.
You know, I can't tell you how much we appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, this is the eve of the most time-demanding days, weeks that you're going to have, and we really appreciate you coming in, and you're a lot like a duck. When I bump into you out of the tournament, on the surface, you're extremely calm, but I know under the surface, you are going a mile a minute.
I finally figured it out.
Just everything that you do as an individual, Dan, we greatly appreciate.
We've got a great staff, too, but thank you.
You bring all of those people right into the middle of basically a neighborhood, entertain them for an entire week, and then they go, and the tournament's over and it is wrapped up like it never happened.
Yeah.
And the professionalism that you show is just absolutely astounding, and the value to this community of that tournament, we've just sort of grown together over the years.
Sure have.
And it is very much appreciated by all of us and our staff and all of our residents, so thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
You do it, there is nobody better at their job than what you do, Dan, so we appreciate that very much. Anything else from council?
I just want to say that you're everywhere promoting this tournament, everywhere. I mean, you're covering every venue you possibly could, I don't know how you do it, but you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
And can you, can you train the CBS announcers, remind them that we're in Dublin, not in Columbus?
We work on it hard. I will say, we do need to share the wealth a little bit.
No, no we don't, no we don't.
Yeah.
This tournament's held in Dublin, Ohio.
Right, I hear you, I understand.
Well, I hope it goes off without a hitch, you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate it, so thanks a lot for coming in.
We'll see you next week.
Take care.
Thanks.
It's Public Works Week, Megan. Did you know it was Public Works Week? Well, I'm sure you're going to blush, because I have a proclamation for it. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of a citizen's everyday lives and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in this community, ensuring the health, safety and comfort of all of our citizens, and whereas public works professionals plan, design, construct, maintain and operate public transportation and utility, infrastructure and public buildings, and whereas public works professionals provide vital services including snow and ice removal, curbside chippers, mosquito management, leaf collection and solid waste collections, and whereas the quality of the effectiveness of our public works infrastructure, facilities and services are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our public works professionals, and whereas the city of Dublin staff and the public works department, including streets and utility operations, engineering, fleet management and facilities management, demonstrate every day their commitment to service. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the city of Dublin, and call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize contributions that public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life, signed this 20th day of May, 2019. And I would point out, in Scott's surveys, consistently, some of the highest-rated things in our community are the services that our residents receive. And everybody, a lot of these city services, you don't realize you get them the way you get them until you don't, and people sort of take it for granted. Please know that we here and in this community, I think at the end of the day, do not take it for granted, we greatly appreciate everything that you guys do. So it's your week, Megan and Paul, you can do whatever you want. Take the rest of the week.
Do whatever you want. After Friday.
You can have the rest, you can have the next four hours off.
Thank you very much for those kind words. For the second year, we invited the community to come to the Service Center and help us celebrate Public Works Week. We had a great experience at Public Works Day, you can see some of the pictures up on the screen, it was really a great opportunity to showcase our award-winning fleet, and also a great opportunity for our staff to interact with the residents and the children, and talk about what they do for a living each and every day to help support the community. We also provided two important services in shredded and e-waste, and we had a really amazing turnout this year, we're going to plan to do another shredded in the fall, hopefully. We had eight, over 28,000 pounds of documents shredded, and we also handed out 400 water bottles with the Go Dublin app information in that, because we're really pressing the communication campaign for Go Dublin. Daryl Seiler, I would like to recognize him, he led the planning effort for the event, and it was even better than last year, it took a lot of work leading up to it. Also like to thank the staff that worked the event, gave up their Saturday to help host this event. We do have over 100 team members in public works, consisting of engineers, inspectors, maintenance workers, administrative professionals, and they work hard each and every day to support the community, provide top-notch customer service, so just like to recognize them, this is their week, not my week, it's their week. And we'd like to thank city council for all of your support as well, you provide the tools that's necessary for us to do a great job.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You guys want to say anything, let her do all the talking?
Said it all.
Nothing? You know, that Go Dublin, we have a staff memo in our packet about Go Dublin, it's been a tremendous success, and I used it once just to sort of see what would happen, and it was addressed within maybe a few hours. It was really unbelievable, very easy to do, I took a picture and I issued, it was debris in the roadway, and it was cleaned up within a couple of hours, so it was fantastic. So thank you very much for everything that you guys do, outstanding job. Anything else from council, comments from council? Okay, moving on through the agenda, citizen comments, I don't have anybody that has signed in, but if anybody in the audience would like to raise their hand, they come up, talk about whatever they want for five minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove any of the three items that appear on the consent agenda from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, the three items, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading on ordinances, ordinance 23-19.
Adopting the proposed tax budget for fiscal year 2020.
Matthew?
There are no changes to this ordinance from the first hearing.
Any questions from council? You don't have any financial questions, Kathy?
No.
My goodness.
You know, there were some actual 17 and 18 numbers, are those actual, actual numbers?
Yes.
Because I know we were looking, we had looked for some actual numbers, and I saw that they showed up there, so good. Hopefully we'll have access to those when we enter in budget season.
Okay. Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Northwoods Consulting Partners, Inc., to induce it, to purchase a facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Kyle?
Good evening, members of City Council. Nothing has changed in the agreement since it was first introduced, however, we have a couple representatives on behalf of Northwoods, so I'm going to welcome Mr. Don Abney, who is the Chief Technology Officer, to share a few of their thoughts, along with answering any questions that you may have.
Welcome, Don, how are you?
I'm great, how are you guys?
Good, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for taking the time. As Kyle mentioned, I'm Don Abney, I'm the CTO at Northwoods. He gave me some talking points, I'll run through those, and then any questions you got, or a different level of depth that you need, I'm happy to, happy to tell you what I know. You can't really talk about Northwoods without first speaking about the Northwoods mission, so I'll give you sort of a formal and then an informal introduction to Northwoods, if you're not familiar. Formally, we are a health and human services innovation company, we are all about innovating in software for vulnerable populations and the case workers who take care of those vulnerable populations nationwide, including U.S. Virgin Islands currently. The informal sort of phrase that we use all the time is that we help the people who help the people who need help. An eight-year-old child of one of our, one of our employees came up with that one. So we'll, we'll offer a mix of software products, as well as professional services and business process reengineering for child welfare agencies, Medicaid, SNAP, TANF, income maintenance, child support type of agencies across the country. Most recently, we signed with the Ohio Department of Administrative Services to provide all of our products into all 88 counties in the state of Ohio, just to give you, give you an idea there. We, we fell in love with this problem of health and human services about 20-odd years ago, we've been in Dublin for 14 of those 20 years, and no hurry to go anywhere. In terms of kind of what's new and what's going on in our space, we recently launched a product called Traverse, which is targeted squarely at the child welfare market segment. We leverage the power of cloud computing to offer case discovery to the caseworkers that are generally saddled with anywhere between 18 and 25,000-page-plus case files in their day-to-day job. We can read them, we can make them digitally searchable, we can offer insights, descriptive analytics around these, these cases pretty immediately. We launched that product about a year ago, probably a year ago this month as a matter of fact, we have enjoyed far, far greater-than-anticipated success with the product, including this contract with the entire state of Ohio, to the degree that it's caused us to grow pretty quickly and go look for a new space. It's, it's pretty amazing, it's a wonderful thing to be a part of. So we're gonna, you know, we'll be a few more years fleshing that product out, really getting it to the mature sort of main street place that it needs to be, and behind that, we've got a really big idea around collaboration between agencies that we would like to put out into the marketplace. Without question, I would imagine by 2025, we'll probably be both twice the revenue in human beings that we are right now, which is about 110 here in Dublin, about 175 in total currently. You know, we, we are actively pursuing another space here in Dublin, Kyle asked me to speak on why we chose to remain in Dublin, I would probably just defer to Scott and Dan, and all the wonderful things they just said, this is a wonderful bubble. Our people like it here, and that's probably the primary driver, they like, they, we are central to the places that they live, they like coming here, the infrastructure here is wonderful, the food is great, I can hand out passes to the Memorial Tournament, and they can go at lunchtime. And again, we've been here for 14 years, the other thing that's happened recently is we've availed ourselves of the opportunity to pull from things like the Dublin IT Academy, we've got interns that came in high school that are now coming back on their summers between college, college years, and, and I hope to hire a whole bunch of those people over the course of time, they grew up here, I've got the inside scoop on them as a recruiter. And any of you in the software business at all know that recruiting in software right now is a giant pain in the tuchets, right? So it's, it's wonderful to have these types of programs and services in our community, so many of our software leaders in this city live right here in Dublin, their children are going to come work for me one day and stay right here as well, I hope. The other thing I wanted to, to kind of make a note of is that Dublin is the perfect size and the perfect place to host our clientele, and as a matter of fact, I wanted to apologize, our CEO, Gary Heinz, he would have preferred to have been here this evening, he is actively entertaining right now in this city, the leadership from the largest child welfare agency in the United States, who is checking us out as a potential customer. So he sends his apologies that he could not be here, stuck with me, but that's kind of what I had prepared, I would love to answer anything else you'd like to know about, and otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Don, any questions from council? Kathy?
Yeah, thank you so much, that, it's exciting. You had mentioned that, you know, anybody in IT today knows the challenges of hiring. Share with us what the city could and should do to support growth, because it's going to continue.
Software developers run on food, so the fact that we have a diversity of food offerings, I can, I can, you know, we can get pita's through, you know, Harvest Pizzeria and all kinds of stuff, entertain our folks there, is very helpful. It's a safe place to be, we put in some odd hours sometimes, at no point is anyone ever unhappy to be immersed in this space visually, they feel safe here, leaving in the dark in the evening, and it's accessible. I mean, I don't know that there's a lot more that you can do, it's not a bad place to commute to, I've got 33, I've got 315, I can do all the things I need to do. I would say, you know, strengthen the infrastructure, make sure we keep reinvesting in those school programs and getting folks excited about the technical corridor that Dublin is becoming, but other than that, I mean, we're the only part of this city that's done anything reasonable with our riverfront so far, so I think all these things help quite a lot, just to make this a destination place and a fun place to be.
I just want to thank you for tying this to a purchase of a property, it's, you know, it, it really speaks to a long-term commitment when you're willing to do more than sign a lease, and I think on these economic development deals, it's really, really helpful on both ends than, than when you have a resident, not just someone who is here for time.
Yeah, quite welcome, it's mutually beneficial, so yeah, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you, anything else? Jane, did you have anything? You good?
Thank you.
Okay, Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Introduction, first reading ordinances, ordinance 26-19.
And ordinance, supplementing ordinance 52-15, to establish an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the Bridge Park Z block.
I will introduce it. Matthew?
Good evening, council, tonight I'm bringing forward ordinance 26-19. As discussed in the memo, this action is necessary because the State Auditor's Office requires legislative approval for us to create a fund. The original ordinance, ordinance 52-15, that created the blocks C and Z TIF, also allowed us to create one fund. We believe that an additional fund will allow us to most efficiently track the activities of each block, and that's what we're asking for tonight. This ordinance does not make any additional changes to any other agreement, it just allows us to create a fund.
Questions from council? Kathy?
So, from a flexibility perspective, does this change anything about application of the TIF funds at all?
No, that's exactly why we're interested in separating the funds, is because the TIF revenue from blocks C and Z already have divergent uses, and co-mingling them in one fund just makes it more difficult to easily identify that we're doing things as we should be.
Okay. Will we see additional legislation that will set up A, B, you know, I know we have D block that's active?
For, for every other TIF, we've created one block and one TIF, so you won't see any additional legislation.
So they were already segregated?
They were already created.
These were the only two that were co-mingled?
Exactly.
Any other questions? We still have five of our number, okay, so we will see you back on June 10th. Thanks, Matt. Ordinance 27-19.
Authorizing the city manager went into a real estate purchase agreement to convey the property located at 5800 Shire Rings Road to Air Force One, Inc., and authorizing execution of various related documents.
Donna?
Need an introduction.
Oh, I'll introduce.
Thank you.
Donna?
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening is a real estate purchase agreement for the proposed conveyance of property at 5800 Shire Rings Road. The property in consideration is detailed in page two of your memo, is a six-and-a-quarter acre site, improved with a two-story building consisting of approximately 33,600 square feet, has both warehouse and office space with an appraised value of $2.7 million. The building is currently home to the Department of Development and Department of Information Technology. The engineering group that was formerly at the building has been able to relocate to the Service Center due to the city's investment in those renovations and expansion of that facility. With that move, warehouse space opened up in the 5800 building, which allowed us to lease a portion of that building to Air Force One. You'll recall that that came forward to you, for your approval in the fall of last year. Since that time, the city has continued to review and do some continued space planning to determine the best and highest use of our facilities and create some operational efficiencies, particularly in regard to the newly acquired 5555 perimeter building and how that would be occupied. Through those efforts, it was determined that the 5800 building would require a fair amount of renovation in order to meet our current and future needs. So that determination, in combination with Air Force One's continued need for a larger facility, brought about the opportunity which you have before you tonight. As the proposed purchase price of $2.7 million is in line with the appraised value, and the acquisition of the 5800 building by Air Force One would enable the continued growth of one of Dublin's oldest family-owned businesses, staff recommends approval of the real estate purchase agreement. With that, I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
I have one. I recall when we talked about this earlier, that the, the timing was a little bit different. It kind of was to coincide with the movement of city offices, so does that squeeze us a little bit, and if so, does that, how, how much difference is the timing now, and what will that do to the movement of the offices and such?
Air Force One is not requiring to take possession of the building until April 30th next year.
April 30th, so that falls about the same timeframe we had always imagined, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on June 10th, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 30-19, Ann?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the signalized intersection upgrade Phase One project.
I'll introduce it. Paul?
Members of council, on May 2nd, we opened and read two bids for the signalized intersection upgrade project, which is to, which is Phase One, which is to occur at two intersections, Bridge Street at High Street and Emerald Parkway at Kaufman Road. This work replaces traffic signal wiring and controller cabinets with all new components, including the uninterrupted power supply systems, and also upgrades the pedestrian detection to improve accessibility for those with visually or mobility challenges at those intersections. This project was initially bid in March of this year, and particularly on March 12th, we opened four bids for this project. Unfortunately, at that time, the lowest of those bids received exceeded the estimate in the budget, which is $210,000 by nearly $53,000. We took the opportunity to reach out to the bidders and understand what impacted their bids, and what we learned is, is that the interconnect cable part of the bid during construction, and how to maintain that, was somewhat confusing in the plan, so we went back and clarified that, and then rebid the project, which has actually produced good results for us, because in that second bid, our lowest and best bid was by Complete General Construction in the amount of $220,625.60, which still is 5.1% over the estimate, but certainly much better than the previous bid we had received. Given a relatively small amount, this, that this contract exceeds the budgeted amount, which is just under $11,000, staff anticipates being able to cover that shortage using other budgeted funds. Construction is anticipated to begin probably in June of this month, completion date is actually December 15th of this year, both intersections will remain operational during the work, so there won't be any interruption to traffic. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bids submitted by Complete General Construction Company, and our previous experience with Complete General on numerous past projects, most recently the Highland Crow Road post-road traffic signal improvement, the interim signal improvement has certainly been favorable. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Complete General Construction Company in the amount of $220,625.60, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Complete General Construction Company for this project. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Paul, questions from council? Chris?
Do you have a running tally, so we, this, this one is at five, a little over 5% over budget, we've seen several that have come in under budget as well as over budget. Where, are we pretty close on the whole, are we?
Yeah, I think, I believe we're still under, considering all that we have bid, but yes, we're working on that tally presently. We have, the next council meeting, you'll see three bid acceptances, June 10th, and then we have two more after that, one in July and one in August, but coming, once we open these next bids, which two are this week, and then one next week, we'll have a better idea where we stand.
That would be great information, thank you very much.
Glad to provide it.
Kathy?
Yeah, I, as I was reading this, and we're upgrading these signals, will there be any smart technology?
Yeah, we're working on that presently, part of the issue with these intersections is the cabinet size and having room for that smart technology, so that's part of the, you know, the benefit of making this improvement now is to be able to accommodate that additional infrastructure.
So, for example, what would that be?
Different detection devices, we're working with several companies right now. If you looked at Emerald Parkway, at Kaufman Park Drive, just out here beside the city hall, you'll see a device up on the mast arm, and it's called the iTERRA system, which is a new type of detection, gives us much better data, allows us, improves the signal operation, so that's what you'll see.
So in the budget this year, will we see any of that get implemented, or is it sort of a next year? I know there was, I think, three or four signals, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, as we're replacing these and doing some other things?
Yeah, and there's a memo in your packet that talks about that in the information section, so yes, we're working on it presently.
Right, so, so there is a memo in your packet, as Paul alludes to, about some of these intersection upgrades, traffic management technology, that's sort of a sneak peek, we'll come back to you probably after your summer session with more detail, and also with potential announcements of a couple beta tests that we're working with some companies on. Unbelievable, in that memo, 39,000 cars a day go through Emerald Parkway and Post-Road intersection.
Correct.
That is, that is unreal, unbelievable.
And that was also identified as the heaviest pedestrian use intersection as well?
Emerald and Kaufman Park Drive is one of our higher volume in terms of pedestrians, because of the high school students.
I would suggest that volume might actually be down, because we don't have the level of employment that we used to have in the Verizon Building, so it actually may be less than it was before, when they were completely full.
When you think about how many cars successfully get through that intersection every single day, it is really unbelievable.
Safely, yes, certainly.
Yeah. Anything else from council? Okay, thanks, Paul, Ann?
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under the other portion of our agenda, the France Road Rings Road Neighborhood Commercial Development Project update.
Yeah, good evening, members of council, this is really more of an update as to process than anything else, we have no presentation for tonight, but staff continues to work with Daimler Group on the framework for the public-private partnership to develop the city-owned land located west of France Road between Rings Road and Blazer Parkway. The multifamily residential use that was originally considered is no longer part of the project concept, the fuel station, it was also considered and discussed in one of the public forums, has also been eliminated. Alternatively, the development concept now calls for a combination of small office, community park gathering space, and still continues to contemplate about 38,000 square feet of retail restaurant space. We believe that this is responsive to the concerns previously raised by adjacent residents. Staff and Daimler Group plan to begin the public zoning review process this summer. The site's development will follow the PUD, the traditional planned unit development process, which is summarized in the memo provided to you in your packet. Staff will also work with Daimler Group to draft a development agreement in terms for city council's review and approval. I would suspect that, that that development agreement, it's not specifically laid out here, it's just listed as one of the steps. I would anticipate that we will bring that forward probably after the first informal review process, we get a little bit more public input, and then bring back a proposed development agreement with our recommendation on that. So the point here is, I really just wanted to make you aware of this, that this is our intent going forward, unless you have any concerns, questions, otherwise, that you might want to bring up.
Just be interested in, in having the ability to take a look at some of this before, like the, the architectural drawings or whatever, as you showed us in the past, forward some of those to councils, or is, are they available in council, or they will be available to take a look at?
I think we would share with, those with you at the time. We would present those to Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the regular process, unless, one other thing we've talked about is perhaps there might be another neighborhood engagement prior to that, but I really think we got the feedback we felt we needed, and it was necessary to advance. I think we're being very responsive to those concerns that were brought forward, so I think it's at the point where we got to go through the process as any development would.
Okay, so you think that's?
Certainly share, whatever's going to go to P&amp;Z, we can share that with council at that time as part of that application packet.
Okay.
Dana, help me understand, so some of the potential multifamily that was on there was, at least in concept, contemplated by the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, was it not?
Correct.
Okay, so if, and I'm not, I'm, I don't have a crystal ball, but let's just say, for example, for lack of a better term, the concessions, the negotiations, this process that Daimler's going through with the residents and the feedback and all of that sort of thing. If Daimler doesn't ultimately build the project, and they say this just isn't something we can pull off, we go back to square one to the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, right? I mean, are these, you understand what I'm saying? So, so this developer is saying, okay, well, we be, we may be able to make this a viable project with these tweaks and these modifications, but the Dublin Corporate Area Plan is still what is the planning document, right? So that if this fell apart and we were back to the drawing board seeking new proposals from perhaps other developers, all of those things would be back in play, would they not?
Well, it could be back in play if, if another development partner, remember, just as a reminder, the city bought this property, the city owns the underlying land, the intent of which was to garner this residual piece, which half, about half of which was leveraged to retain Cardinal Health in the parking lot, that, that was built there as part of their retention incentive, and in the balance of this, which has the frontage at the corner of France and Rings Road. The idea is to introduce certain amenities within the context of the Dublin Area Corporate Plan. Dublin Area Corporate Plan does allow for some housing in what is that area plan, which is generally west of France Road. So the answer is yes, it could be contemplated there. Again, if, if this did not go through and, and we sought, and we, being the city, sought another partner, someone else might propose that as well, but it might be a different kind of housing, or a different way that might be more amenable to, to the, to the, to the city or to the residents. That would be yet to be seen. But I, I think, generally speaking, this has gone through a, a public input process and the feedback, and, and the developers have said, look, okay, we'll consider not doing the residential component, we'll convert more of that part of this plan to commercial office, which we like. I, I, you know, staff, I tell you, we like the commercial office aspect, and putting in a bigger park, and the thing I'll give you a heads up on is there's going to be a cost to that park, and that cost would be to the city, as proposed, and that's something we'll have to wrestle through with as part of the development agreement. Also, to what extent is the city going to be willing to leverage land in this to get the amenities into that area that are being requested by our corporate residents in that area specifically, because that is what the de-cap was all about, was about trying to reset conditions in that area to bring amenities closer to the corporate campuses there that don't have those and are suffering as a result, or will potentially suffer. So there's a balancing act yet, we're still going through this process, and process of public input, so, so I, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, I just want to make sure I understand that as we sort of evolve the project, the Daimler project, as it were, that doesn't change the corporate area plan that was passed.
No, no, that does not change the plan. So in fact, the PUD makes it more of a specialized process with some, with some changes to the, to the, not changes to the de-cap, but exception to what the de-cap would ask for.
Understood, okay.
Jay?
I guess for me, I'd just like to keep kind of know along the way as we develop the development plan and the parameters, and as you said, if there's some costs that the city might incur when it comes to parkland, that sort of thing, to have the opportunity to study that, to understand what those ramifications are, and that it meets the plan the way we like, so.
I guess what I hear you asking for is, is, and why I raise it this way, is this is the process we propose. If council wants to take on a different process, i.e., you want the development agreement first, we could present the development agreement to you, at which time then you could talk about uses, and you could talk about whether you like it or not, and whether you want to support it with a development agreement. It's kind of a cart and a horse argument, which you should do first. I would, I would encourage you to at least do the concept plan engagement with the public first on this one, and get more, get some feedback from the public. We think this is very responsive to what was being heard. I mean, yet to be seen, until it's seen, but we, we're working on that, and we think that's the case. So I, I would just recommend, which you can take a different route if you want, is to let that go to concept plan first, and then if that seems to be well-received, or significantly well-received, there's always going to be tweaks, right? Then we would feel more, I think, encouraged as staff to advance our recommendations on the development agreement.
Dana, I appreciate the fact that the development agreement is step four. I, I think that that is the, the truest way to let the public process happen, because when we do the development agreement first, you know, we, we have already sent a message to the people that, that work for us, right? The boards and commission folks, they're, and so when we send a message before they get to hear, I, I think it interrupts the public process. So I appreciate that the development agreement is the fourth of four steps, and I really appreciate the fact that the plan to have this move forward, it's, I think it's the most fair to the public, and it's the most fair to the applicant as well.
Because they just, so for, just for clarity, you like the fourth step, so I was proposing it might actually be step two, or, or, or at least after the informal review, and so that there's that opportunity for public input, and then taking a look at, at that. I don't, I don't know if you were really proposing these as one, two, three, four, Donna, or not, so.
The schedule that we had proposed, and again, this is just a rough timeline of next steps, depending on the conversation tonight, but the informal review would go to Planning and Zoning on June 20th. The rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat would move forward to Planning and Zoning for their recommendation and city council's recommendation. There would be two hearings for that to move forward, tentatively on August 8th, after your break. The final development plan and plat to Planning and Zoning and city council after that, and then finally, the development agreement, as per council member, Amaro Skrooms' comment, would come forward potentially on September 9th, if all those sequen, all those things fell into sequence.
Okay, so you don't, so I just want to, I want to clarify then, with staff, you don't want the flexibility to bring that forward any sooner? The development agreement, and nor does the developer, they're willing to hang in there through, through those three steps. Okay, all right, that's good enough.
There you go.
It's a great way to go.
Anything else? Jane, Kathy, John?
No.
Christina?
Okay, so we don't need to do anything?
No, I guess what I'm hearing is, steps as laid out are good.
Hearing no objections, that sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
The, this, the staff comments, dicential? That is a ominous sounding word. Census, complete?
Yeah, I actually have three items that I'd like to, to, I need a little guidance on. So first, I guess we could take that one first, the, um, the census count, which Mr. Mark Boyd was here at your last meeting, you might recall, and at that meeting, we, we mentioned that we were going to have an internal staff meeting about, about that, and we'd already been giving that some thought, and it was at that, at your last meeting, Mr. Boyd did mention the idea of a, a complete count committee, and we gave you a memo on this that explains what that is. Staff in its memo also suggested some representation on that by the different groups listed out. I think one other was brought up about Washington Township as a possibility, but Eric's here, I don't know if they're doing their own complete count committee, or if they want to participate in ours, that would be great. What we're looking for tonight is, is this list generally okay? Do you want to, as council, make these individual appointments, or would you like staff to come back to you with a resolution with some recommended names, or you could send us some names and we could incorporate those, or what kind of appointment process would you like to follow in establishing the committee, if you would like to establish the committee? I guess I don't want to assume that you really want to do that, but, but we, we would, we would recommend that.
I think we should. I think Christina would be excellent to serve. Didn't you want to do, weren't you interested in this? Maybe if we could open up by the next council meeting, you get us a list, and then we can send any names we suggest you to consider between now and then?
Okay, yep, that would be great.
And does anybody else on council want to be on this? Christina, it's all yours.
I like bean counting.
There you go.
Don't count the beans, count the people.
So is that what you need, general, on that one?
Okay, great, well, thank you for that. So we will, we will advance on that and get those names to you, and also get back to you a resolution as well. The other item I had was regarding another memo in your packet, namely the Sawmill Road Corridor Study briefing, or you might recall that Sawmill Road Corridor Study was initiated back in 2015. Along the course of that, it was determined that, that the planning area would be expanded as our partners came forward, which included City of Columbus as well as Ohio Department of Transportation, so the area to be reviewed actually went from State Route 161 all the way to Hard Road, including the, the interchange at, at I-270 and Sawmill Road. Megan's done a nice job here of including the timeline of all that has happened since. The essential summary of this is in your memo, there's not a whole lot of detail, because we want to bring forward to you these results and, and make you more aware of the details of those, of the study, and there's some suggested process or next steps in the memo to move this study forward, and just want to know if you, you are okay with, with those steps, or if there's some other way you would like us to, to bring that forward to you and/or the public.
I would like a little clarification, when I'm looking at the possible I-270 crossing, is that, can you kind of describe, is that coming off of?
The extension, the new?
The extension. Yeah.
When you go to curve up towards the roundabout, it would curve away and go across down to Tuller.
Down to Tuller, past, okay, it's hard for me to see that. It seems like you've, you've got some great studies going on, I guess I'd just like maybe a little bit clearer understanding of, of how these roads work, it's kind of hard. Can we access the, the study so that I can read it, or?
Yeah, the whole idea is about the next steps about the study, so step one is to come to you all and give you all that detail.
Okay.
And present that to you, make you aware of all those results, and then we would also, we, we were proposing to do that on, as a council agenda item, maybe under other, or you could do it at a work session, but I think we're proposing for the sake of briefing and getting that out to the public, this setting would probably be best, if you're, if you're willing, and then after that, then we can do some more engagement with elected officials and public stakeholders and property owners and so forth, and do a more in-depth, maybe an open house or something on that, to include some sort of engagement with residents in general, and then from there, and that feedback, we would, you know, try to wrap up the study and then get into project prioritization and potential funding and that sort of thing.
Dana, on the location of that possible I-270 crossing, how much of this study is wrapped up in the location of that crossing, of where it crosses 270?
I'll let Megan answer that. It probably may have to give you the whole study results to, to get into that detail, but I don't know, Megan, if that's something you could address tonight or not.
I'm not sure how to answer that. I mean, the, the general location of the crossing is specified in the study? So essentially, we're looking at a bridge that is where the exit ramps and entrance ramps begin to flare on it, so we'll probably have a little bit longer bridge than if it were moved farther to the west. And also, there is that great track of land right there that is a really fantastic development site, that this road is kind of bisecting, and I'm wondering, you know, what our thoughts are on that specific piece of real estate, and, you know, are, are we maybe limiting some of the, what can happen there by, you know, using up a lot of the acreage for the roadway? Yeah, and these, this study is very preliminary conceptual alignment, so it's not pinpointing the precise locations, just in that general vicinity where a crossing could be possible. I realize that we need a place to land it on the other side of, you know, on south of 270, and it's going to be, you know, have to be land that's available, but I, I just had some concern about breaking up, that's, I don't know what the acreage is on that parcel, but I would suspect it's one of the larger, single acreages available on the east side of the river, and.
Well, if I could, because I, I was involved in purchasing that property in the alignment of Emerald Parkway, we, we really didn't intend to get into that level of detail tonight, but, but what I would tell you is where this is located on here actually helps the, helps the situation, because there's a residual piece of triangle land that's not very developable. Just the way this is laid out conceptually actually helps that situation, the way that property lays out, but this was put in here just sort of as an illustration of some of the things that were considered. There's also a intersection improvement at Snoffir, at Sawmill, that is also contemplated in the study, that there are graphics on and so forth, that, that I think ties into this, this alternative and some other things that, that helped move traffic in that whole entire area, so.
Yeah, and really, once the decision's made as to whether we want to pursue a crossing in that general vicinity, then we would proceed with a bridge-type study, and that's where we would look at different types and the precise location of the bridge. Good, and the, all indications seem to be positive towards a crossing, or at least ODOT didn't say no.
Right, yep, yep.
That's always a good place to start.
Yeah, there's a lot of good come out, that came out of the study, I'm sure there'll be lots of thoughts and opinions about, about it, which is why we advance this to the public, and we look forward to that engagement. So I guess at this point, we'll plan on doing a briefing to you under other at a near council meeting, and bring you up to speed on some of those details, and get, I guess we'll get some of the draft report, will we not, Megan, in your, in your hands as part of the preparation for that presentation, and then get you a little bit more detail on some proposed scheduling and engagement processes following that.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, great, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports, P&amp;Z, Jane.
Planning and zoning didn't have a meeting, but I did. Sorry, about that. The Ohio Planning Association Conference that Dublin hosted at the exchange last Friday, and I want to thank especially the planning department and Nikki Martin, who pretty much put that together. It was a really wonderfully well-attended event. I also want to thank two of our commission members, Shannon Stenberg and Andrew Keeler, who took time away from work to, to attend the session. They had a variety of topics, they were quite interesting. Couple that stood out in my mind were a discussion about the use of mobility devices and how we can accommodate them in our streets, in our planning department, I'm sure we'll bring some of that forward, utilizing multi-use lanes. And then one of the ones that I attended was on the missing middle housing section, which interestingly enough, Scott Dring brought up, that we got a C-plus on, affordable housing of a variety of styles and shapes and forms. So this one was kind of interesting, Upper Arlington is presented, and we're struggling somewhat with a lot of, they have a lot of middle housing that needs to be renovated. We don't have a lot of middle housing, we're a lot of single residential and a lot of apartment complexes, but as we go forward, I think it's worth the conversation to talk about how we can bring in some variety of housing styles that fit that middle piece that accommodates seniors and singles, so, but it was a great, it was a great event, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Admin, Mike is not here. Chris, do you have a?
Just a reminder that we have our midpoint check-in on June the 3rd that we had all agreed to, and if you have any topics that you would like to revisit other than the topics that were circulated at the time, at the, at the initial review time, please let me know, so I can get those added to the list and forward to the parties that need that information. I would appreciate that sooner rather than later, so everyone has an opportunity to prepare.
Thank you. Chris, community development, John?
Yes, let's see, the Community Development Commission met on May 8th from 1:00 to 3:30, and I want to thank my colleagues, because they had to read approximately 480 pages of material to get through the meeting, and it was very informative, and I'll just start with the, in a synopsis, I'll start with the historic district code update and design guidelines, and we went through all that, historic district zoning code update, and it's pretty well decided that this should be sent to the ARB, let them review it, also be good for them to be deeper in the weeds on all this detail. So, and the other part of that discussion actually revolved around possibly maybe a name change to make people more aware of the historic district aspects of the ARB, so, that was that. Then we had the Bridge Street District Market Study, and Lori Volk from Zimmerman-Volk and Associates was here, and Sarah Wadsworth from W-Z-HA. Both these folks showed up about five to seven years ago to help us do the planning for the Bridge Street Corridor, and absolutely outstanding people on statistics and numbers. It was a comprehensive market study that covered retail, hotel, condos, single family. The, probably the great news from this, if we just got to get to the positive side, I, I just hope that when the minutes come out, you get a chance to read it all, was they just couldn't stop complimenting Dublin for being a visionary city, just, these two firms actually have participated in over 80 cities, a lot of them like San Francisco, San Diego, really amazing people, and just said when they travel the United States and they're doing consulting, Dublin is what they talk about to everybody else in the country, that this is like the leading city. So they went. So, they went through the entire, it was a great symposium on just positive findings. I would also say that, you know, just in synopsis without all the tons of details and number crunching they did in comparison, and the reason they love the Bridge Street Corridor was because it was like the perfect mix. It was hotel business, food, office, residential. And they said a lot of the cities that they advise end up doing either office or residential. They don't get it right. And so, our numbers based on their numbers was just amazing. So, everyone's got to be proud in this room that had something to do with us, because this looks like it's the apex of about as far as you're going to get on perfection on planning out a new city. And it was very impressive just to listen to these people, because, you know, I got to hold them in high esteem when we had them here last time, five to seven years ago. Their numbers were really well put together at that time and gave us a lot of direction. So, I do hope, and we also invited them back sometimes to just give you a synopsis, the rest of you, of what they learned about Dublin and the statistical numbers on how many housing units yet we can absorb, how many more condos. So, it was really a really good presentation. So, that's it in synopsis, and there's 480 pages, boiled down to about three minutes, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. Finance committee, this was what I was alluding to. Mike is not here. Kathy and Christina, who are members of the finance committee, do you have anything that you could throw out there?
We haven't met.
Okay. Public services, Christina?
We'll meet in June.
Central Ohio, Coda, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Tomorrow.
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 Morpsy, Chris?
We met on the 9th. You've probably been seeing the funding mechanism emails come to your inbox. I think Ann's forwarded a few of them along, so just continuing to work through. Dana and I met with our annual meeting with them last week and continuing to see what funding opportunities there are for some of the projects that we have ready to roll.
Thank you, Chris. The LUC Regional Planning Commission, we've used an abbreviation now. Kathy?
Nothing to report.
US 33 Innovation Corridor Group, Kathy?
No, we don't have anything, thank you.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
I want to start up the season for the music in the park over at Sciota, and June 9th is Ball in the House from Boston, a capella group for all ages. So, that's going to be our first offering for the first week, and I think they did a really great job getting a really interesting variety of music this year for everyone. So, if you're not doing anything on Sunday night between 7:00 and 8:30, grab a lawn chair and go out and listen to some nice music and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
We'll meet next month.
Washington Township liaison, I bet, I don't know how many people knew, we have a rock star amongst our members tonight. I got in my, I got in the mail my Washington Township annual report, and I opened it up, and there's Mr. Richter in all of his glory. What a fantastic document you guys put together. It was really very, very well done, full of a lot of helpful information, really good thing that you guys put out. I would like to get an autographed copy, if you'd be okay with that.
Well, first off, we appreciate that. That's not why I wanted to come up here, though. I wanted to, we do appreciate that. I'm glad that you found the annual report useful. The staff put a lot of energy into that, and I think it turned out pretty well, so appreciate that. But I wanted to follow up to Dana's comment about the Census Bureau. Mr. Boyd's scheduled to come to meet with the Board of Trustees on their May 28th meeting. I think due to the size of the unincorporated parts of Washington Township, it may be more prudent for us and efficient and practical for us to be part of something larger. So, if the invitation is open, I'll share that with the Board of Trustees and let them know that, and then I will get back with you day and a half to the 28th.
Fantastic, great.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Dublin Bridges Liaison, Jane?
Nothing.
Roundtable, we'll just stay with you.
Couple of things. I attended the, we had a great public meeting on the Monterey Planning Project. We had over 50 people show up. It was quite interesting, and I think very beneficial. Planning staff said that it was one of the best meetings they've had, with the residents came with a broad range of thoughts, a lot of good suggestions. It was very respectful, very productive. It was really an interesting thing, and I think that they came back with quite a few really constructive comments to be made. So, I'm really happy to have that meeting take place. We sat in on the council, I don't know who's going to report on that, so, on the council chambers addition design committee. So, are you going to talk about that?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, well, it was just, it was interesting to talk to the architects, and I think the rest of council would kind of like to hear a little bit. They came with three options on where to put an addition. I think there was an agreement that the addition belonged on, I guess that would be the south side of the south side.
Towards the Justice Center.
Towards the Justice Center. And it was quite interesting. Will probably be somewhat of a two-story, but the council chambers was decided should be on the main floor. The architect's going to come back with some, it was very conceptual, but it's going to come back with some further ideas on how to utilize that space with the chamber on the bottom, cafe space, meeting space, socialization space, the use of outdoor space, and then offices upstairs. So, be interesting to see how that comes about.
Yeah.
And then, the last thing, quickly.
After that, Chris, while we're on the subject.
Sure, go ahead.
No, I really appreciate the images they brought and the thinking, and there's a lot to consider.
Yeah, it was a very interesting meeting, a very productive meeting. It was concise. We talked through what we needed to talk through. They had a lot of cool images. It is going to be absolutely spectacular when it's done.
And it was interesting that the apparent solution that we've arrived at thus far, maybe it's not the permanent solution, but the apparent solution was kind of one that everyone, you know, it was everyone's first pick, so.
Right. Plus, it was a little bit of a combination of some of the pieces and parts of the best of each of the three that they gave, which it was really, it was really fun to be able to talk about the needs, and I know that Clerk's Office had some comments too, and those should be incorporated. So, yeah, it was fun, and I thought it was important that you hear what we discussed. The last thing, as I noted in the memos, that we're getting some new kiosks in the historic district. And I remember when I served on the ARB, we talked about this a little bit, about some of the things that the city places, like the bike racks and the benches and the planters and the kiosks, and they're all, they've all been lovely. But, you know, I'd like to suggest maybe the possibility of running some of these things by ARB, because it's landscape, it's street, it's street character, it's street looks. And I think the ARB looks at landscape, and they look at the preservation of the character of the district. Dana, I don't know how we worked that out, but I know that lots of times we're, we on ARB at times were a little surprised when something new showed up on the street that they didn't know were aware of. So, I kind of like to see ARB have an opportunity to at least have a comment when we put some new streetscape up. So, it provides the continuity, I think, and oversight on design principles that ARB is really good at. So, I'd just like to make that suggestion as a possibility. That's all. Thank you.
The only thing I'd mention about that is the kiosks aren't new. I think the only one that's new is by the garage. I think we just really focused on replacing the map sets and updating the map sets, I believe.
Right. We do a lot in the city of placing like wayfinding signs, especially in the historic district. They are the one unifying body that can take a look at something and make a suggestion.
Yeah, I totally get what you're saying. So, we'll be careful about that if we're adding new and.
Yeah, just run it by them and give them an opportunity to comment on it. I appreciate that.
Well taken. Is that it, Jane?
Yep.
Kathy?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to get away for past 10 days, and one thing that I find interesting when I travel the world now is that you're looking for what they're doing and what you're doing and how similar it is. And I had the opportunity to be in Malta and then London here, and I, it was amazing to me how the smart city initiatives are everywhere, whether that's a historic walled city in Malta or in London. And there are a lot of conversation on the street about what's happening with smart city and engaging residents in that. So, you were talking about wayfinding, but this is more like futurefinding types of things. And it was very interesting how they've taken some of the complex concepts and really made it so that residents could see, and I've taken a few photos of this, but we're all doing the same things right now. We really are, and so it was a real nod to some of the work that we're doing. But how we socialize that and how we engage the residents, I think there's some really interesting things we can do. And it was also interesting when you talk about City Hall. City Hall in London is right in the heart of everything, you know, and a very interesting space. And I happened to be sitting at a little cafe near there, and I don't know how many people came by and said, oh, that's City Hall, that's City Hall, you got to go inside that City Hall. So, having something that really is a social connection space, I think will pay big dividends. So, smart cities, they're everywhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. John?
Yeah, I got a funding request. Let's see if we can get a picture of this up. Can you do that? Okay, this is a, we're over in Sciota Park, and this came from some people in our historical department. After cutting back a nasty moldy floor rose, you look down, and this is a spring, probably one of the original things that kept our Native Americans here, maybe even some of the pioneers, and it's gurgling up straight out of the ground. So, if you tear up leaves and you drop it on it, they go away from the center. So, it tells you, okay, this is coming up through the earth. And then, if you go to another slide, okay, now, this is another interesting spot because the water is coming out of our hill there, and of course, that could be contaminated by sewage or other things. And so, it's sort of interesting in that the, that there's a person that goes there every week and harvests the water crest, and as Jane Fox explained to me a week or two ago, that water crest only grows in pure water. So, I was just wondering if we'd have the funding to maybe have that water tested, just out of curiosity, instead of putting a sign up that says, "Don't drink it." I'd sort of be curious to know what the quality of the water is.
Why is there a child in the cave?
So, you know, is there anybody interested in knowing that? I mean.
We want to know who this little guy is.
What's the gnome doing in the cave, John?
All right, well, on the more humorous side, all caves have spirits historically, you know, protecting them.
There he is.
And so, just, you know, Dublin is so unique, and if you see the magic words, Dublin is a visionary city. Sometimes this gnome appears in this cave. It's really rather neat. It's an interesting thing to show your children or grandchildren. It's one of those little special things about our city that makes it interesting. So, there is inside that water source, this gnome holding a lantern, so. But anyway, I need funding to see if we could have the water tested, to see what kind of water's coming out here, because this is the water that then both of these divergent springs meet, and then they run down to the river.
So, these are two different springs, one's in Sciota Park.
Both are in Sciota Park.
Well, I thought one was on the west side of the river.
There's another spring below the bridge, the old Dublin spring, but I agree with John. These are such unique water features that most of our schoolchildren have never seen a natural spring. And when I walk below the bridges, as John and I said, water crest grows. Water crest only grows in natural spring water. Water crest is like a little lettuce, and it has the highest antioxidant level of any green. It's very expensive if you buy it at the grocery store, but it grows in natural spring water, and we have natural springs. It would be wonderful to showcase those.
Yeah, I think those springs that are in Sciota Park were the springs that fed the original swimming pool.
Right. Yeah, there's an old pipe there.
And so, that was that, the pool was, the swimming pool was there, and then the water was all spring water, and then it would just overflow into the river, and they didn't treat the pool particularly. So, I think it's worth, you know, you know why I think it's worth testing this? Because it's going to be a good indication of what's in the wells that the people of our community are drinking out of those that are still on, you know, well water systems. So, I do think it's worth, because I think it's more, it's very interesting, it would be good to know, but I think it would also be enlightening in terms of public health and safety.
So, we got citizens that are actually harvesting this water crest, and as you guys said, water crest is extraordinarily high in vitamin K, which is a very unusual vitamin. So, we got people harvesting this stuff. It'd be nice to know if this was safe to do, because if it isn't and that water's polluted, we want to put a sign up there, you know, "Not palatable," you know, for man nor dog. So, but it's a neat, it's a really, and like you said, Jane, these are really unique original features. This is where probably the Native Americans settled along here, and just a really neat spot. Plus, now, you know, it has a gnome or a leprechaun or something living in the cave, which is.
It'll be gone in the morning.
Highly unusual.
It used to be.
So, you know, are we all in agreement?
I think that's great.
We need somebody to do a water quality test, is that possible?
Sure.
Dana? All righty, thank you.
Anything else, John?
That's it.
Christina?
Thanks. I just wanted to remind everybody that the library opening is June 6th, and there will also be a celebration of the 1919 building at 9:00 on the 8th, which is Saturday. So, hopefully, everyone will have a chance to go over there and take part in the library opening. I know they're expecting it to be really, really crowded. People are pretty excited about the opening. And then, just one quick comment. Megan, the new street signs in Muirfield have gotten mostly good feedback. There are a few who really liked those old wood signs, but mostly people are, I don't know, I got three or four different people texting me like, "These are great, everyone loves them." So, thank you for starting that process. It's a three or a four-year process, remind me? To replace, four years?
Three or four.
Oh, you're sure?
Three or four.
Gotcha. And then, I've also had several folks who've requested the street sweeper or chipper shredder through the Dublin Go app, and people really love it. So, and that's it, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Christina. Chris?
I want to congratulate the Leadership Dublin graduates. Kathy and I attended their graduation on the 8th, and it was really nice presentations. Wanted to thank Dana and staff for hosting the Intelligent Community Forum. That was really interesting. I mean, if you really want to get your nerd on, that's a good place to go. And they had great information, and it was just very interesting and brought people from, there are folks from Canada, from most around the United States, and it was a very interesting time. And then, went to the Citizens Police Academy Dinner and Fundraiser on the 16th, and congratulations to them. They put on a great event and seemed like they were raising a lot of money, and so, appreciate all of what the Citizens Police Academy and the police folks do to support that in our community. So, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Chris. I got a text from my niece. She wants to know when the pool opens. Matt, Saturday? This Saturday, the pool will be open, so it is summertime. I attended the, my daughter graduated from Kaufman on Saturday, and it is just a reminder of what a fantastic school system we have. All three of our high schools are ranked in the top 3% in the country by the US News and World Report. It is what Doc Hodley and his staff have been able to do, is really just phenomenal, so we greatly appreciate them. And my final comment is thanks to Chief Pis. Last Friday, this is now maybe my third or fourth time speaking at the police memorial ceremony that Dublin hosts for all of central Ohio, and the police officers come from all around our community, and Sean Johnson lost his life in the line of duty three years ago yesterday. And then, since then, we have the Westerville Officers, and it is such a moving ceremony that goes back for several decades, and every officer that has lost their life in the line of duty, their name is read, and it is just a very moving thing. One of the widows from one of those officers spoke, she did a fantastic job. It's just such, it's an emotional thing, and then when you realize that these folks are out there protecting us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and a lot of times, we take them for granted. So, Chief, you ran a fantastic ceremony, very moving comments. You picked up from where Hines left off without missing a beat, and I greatly appreciate you doing that and allowing us to recognize the officers who have paid that ultimate price. So, thanks for what you do with that, Chief. And with that, we are adjourned.